This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, November the 25th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. On a day like today, we celebrate the scriptures that says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord." What a great audience here today, and a pleasure to lead us today in prayer. Let us pray. Our Father, we're grateful to you for your grace and how you look upon your people that humble themselves before you and ask for your mercy. We welcome you, Holy Spirit. We welcome your ownership, and we pray that you'd help us to better steward the smile and the good hand that we greet from you. Would you bless our leaders today, Father, who give oversight to our city? And we pray you make us great as we love and adore and serve you in the same. We pray you favor us today with your great presence. In the strong name of Christ, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, the Constitution of liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Ingram.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, everyone. It's good to see everybody this morning. Welcome to our November 25th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrated position, the off or the vibrated position. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council must sign in, indicating the ordinance, the resolution, or public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When speaking to this council, the speaker must give his or her name. Any person that is designed to address the Mobile City Council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified or retained to the City of Mobile Business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the City Clerk office and wish to speak on a non-agenda item will not be allowed to address this council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address this council. A bell will indicate the sound of the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing this council, there be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair, who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Approval of minutes of November 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communication from Mayor Chiracottis' office.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As we approach the Thanksgiving holidays, I want to let you all know that the city offices will be closed on Thursday and Friday in observation of Thanksgiving. Also want, on behalf of the mayor's office, to wish all of our employees, the city council, and our citizens, a happy Thanksgiving. City of Mobile's garbage and trash services will not run on Thursday, November 27th. They'll resume our normal operations on Friday. Thursday's trash and garbage routes will be made up on Saturday, November 29th. And the City of Mobile's recycling and drop-off centers will also be closed on Thursday and Friday. Want to remind everybody about trotting off the turkey. Animal Services is inviting every resident and every citizen to trot off the turkey by walking a shelter pet from the time of 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM on Thursday. That's a great way to get out and get active. It's a wonderful family activity on Thanksgiving. Dogs will love it, and so will you. You can find more information about this event on the Mobile Animal Shelter Services Facebook page. Also want to talk about Black Friday, an adoption event that the City of Mobile Animal Shelter will also have, an adoption special. That's November 28th from 10:00 AM until 4:00 PM. All adoption fees are going to be waived, so it's a perfect time to take home a new pet. You can see all of our adoptable pets at the animalservicesmobile.com website. In addition to that, Friday, want to talk to you all about Small Business Saturday in the Holiday Market. On November 29th, Small Business Division will host Small Business Saturday. Don't forget to shop small and shop local. That's the City Office of Small Business Development and City Events Team hosting an outdoor holiday market for small businesses and vendors Saturday. The event takes place in Montegra Park, November 29th, from noon until 4:00 PM. There'll be all kinds of local vendors and small businesses located there. So it's an excellent way to support our local businesses and get some early Christmas shopping going. Follow the City of Mobile Events page on social media and learn more about this one and other great events. And once again, happy Thanksgiving. This concludes the remarks from the mayor's office.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Penn?
Good morning. It's a great day in the City of Mobile. Do y'all see these beautiful colors, that orange and green? Can we make some noise for the Tomerville Rattlers, the Tomerville LaFlore Association? The greatest high school in the world. I have a proclamation, and so can I ask the board members of the Tomerville LaFlore Association to make their way to the podium? So if you don't know, y'all know that John L. LaFlore Magnet School mean a lot to me. I believe it's the greatest high school in the world, and I'm always willing to celebrate. And so we have a proclamation here today. Whereas John L. LaFlore Magnet High School is a historic public magnet performing arts high school located in the Tomerville community. It's part of Mobile County Public School System. Whereas the school offers nursing programs, US Army JRTC, engineering, moving images dance company, band, visual arts, piano, chords, pre-law, arts, and other career technical education courses. Its curriculum is focused on program and tailored for students with a strong emphasis on performing arts, communication, law, and media entertainment. Whereas from 1968 through 1980, the school was known as Tomerville High School. In 1981, the school was renamed to John L. LaFlore High School in honor of John L. LaFlore, civil rights activist. The renaming of the school brought about a move into authentic building with amenities that would equip this institution for upcoming magnet program. It was not until mid-1980s that the learning institution gained a magnet program and changed its name to John L. LaFlore Magnet High School, divided into two schools, the comprehensive side and the magnet. Whereas aside from the school curriculum and performing arts, LaFlore is known for its mighty marching rattler band, which is influenced in musical styles and marching precision by Jackson State, Florida A&amp;M, and Southern University. And whereas over years, many successful people have graduated from John L. LaFlore Magnet High School, such as Shamar Figures, the congressman, DeMarcus Cousin, gold medal winner, and Antonio Lane, both NBA players. We also had Paul Harris, Lawyer Tillman, Anthony Marshall, Eddie Lewis. And these are just some, all the NFL player. We also have a rapper who had a top hit, Rich Boy. So many more. Whereas education is improving lives and leaving our community. We here, we also have the president of the Mobile County Public School System, Sharon McDay. Can we give her a big hand? Now therefore, I, Councilman Corey Penn, who also graduated from LaFlore of District 1, and the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby and recognize and honor and celebrate John L. LaFlore Magnet High School during the Tomerville LaFlore Alumni Week set for November the 24th through the 30th, 2025. So Tomerville LaFlore has a whole week named after them in the City of Mobile. Can we give them a big hand, guys?
Yes, to God be the glory. We would like to thank all of you, all of the Rattlers that are here today, and this great alumni staff right here, and especially Councilman Penn for making this here happen for all of us. It's no big eyes and little you in this, it's about all of us. Thank you.
So you see the amazing cheerleaders right here. The cheer team has the highest GPA for the first quarter of all of athletic programs. Can we give a big hand for the cheerleaders? So can I get the coach, as well as the administration staff, to come down? The cheer team increased their competition score by double digits from last year to this year and had one of the highest scores of all Mobile County Public School Systems. So it's my honor to give you a certificate of recognition for the John L. LaFlore Magnet High School Cheerleader Team. Can we give them a big hand?
I just want to say to our girls, we are very, very proud of y'all with the hard work that y'all have put in. Y'all have come a long way. And y'all know it's only up from here. Next year, we got to go to meet, and we gonna make sure we get there. So congratulate the ladies. Again, thank you for having us. Congratulations to our girls. We know that they are students first and then athletes second. So thank you to our girls for having the highest GPAs in the school for athletics, and we will continue to push them forward. Thank you.
So you see these young men here, you see the coaches. So I would like to ask the coaches, as well, the president of the park to come down. I have a certificate that I would like to present to you all as well. Can we give them a big hand for coming down? So if you don't know, I played football when I was younger, from peanut to midget. And it was coaches who truly have changed my life. The discipline, the structure. And many of these coaches, and I think probably all of them volunteered their time to give back to our community. So to the coaches and to the players, I want to congratulate you all. They won four of the five championships right here in the City of Mobile. Can we give them a big hand? So I would like to invite the president of the park to speak at this time.
Good morning. On behalf of Tomerville Rattlers Youth Football Organization, I'm Terrence Simpson, president of the park. I would like to give a big thank you to the city council. Corey Penn for inviting us, and acknowledging these great accomplishments of these young men. In this community, we have some great leaders. All these guys standing behind me, we're really like brothers at this point. It's not about the coaches. We go above and beyond the football. A lot of these boys have made eight honor roll in their classroom. They have great behavior, and they're awesome football players. So we would like to continue this with the support of the city. Years to come, you'll see some of these young men as student athletes. It's like, that's what we consider them as, student athletes. So I know we acknowledging championships today, but they're great scholars in the making. And I want to thank all of my support with coaches, parents, anyone that's a part of this youth organization that has made this possible as a team, as a family. Thank you.
And so we would like to get a picture with the football players, as well as the cheerleaders, so if we can get the football players to come down, and you can get a picture with, so we can get a picture with the whole city council.
Come down some, come down this way some. Move over a little bit, closer to him. Move over closer. Move over closer. Yeah, move over, so they can come in.
All right, everyone, let's look at the cameras. On the count of three, we're gonna go ahead and look at cameras. Let's get everyone's attention, please. All right, on the count of three, one, two, and three.
One, two, three.
This is title. Bye. Bye-bye.
So if I could get everybody's attention, if the football players or anybody at this time would like to leave, you're welcome to leave at this time. We're finna get ready to start with our agenda.
Oh, they won, oh, okay. Is that the group you used with?
So Ms. Gray, we're gonna move the youth council up to the agenda. So she'll be next.
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion.
This, Mr. President, I would like to make amendment to the agenda, move up 031509 to the top of the agenda.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Going back to original, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 03150, I'm sorry, consent resolutions being introduced. We need a motion to suspend the rules.
Move to waive the rules for the consent resolution, as read?
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived, Madam Clerk?
031509, appoint Alana Williams to the Mobile City County Youth Council.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Can we get Alana Williams? Can you stand up so everybody can see? She will be on my Mobile City Youth Council. Thank you so much.
Not only is she a championship cheerleader, she is also now on the youth council. So congratulations, young lady. Good to have you.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave of the noise ordinance on November the 29th in Figures Park and February 22nd on Dolphin Island Parkway.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to fix the cost of demolition of structures at 966 Kentucky Street, 709 South Carolina Street, 5641 Will Cacher Lane, 1009 South Washington Avenue, and 5937 West Haven Drive.
This opened up the public hearing for these particular said items. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these items? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have no one signed for agenda items or non-agenda items. Consent resolutions held over. 401456, fix cost for demolition of structure at 559 Hickory Street.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Resolutions held over. 081470, approve purchase order to all Tech Industries. 601473, authorize settlement agreement and release of claims.
So moved?
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
471471 and 1472 are considering vacation of rice away located on Lot 1, MAAACDC subdivision, and also consider a vacation fee as a condition of the vacation of rice away.
Move to lay it over one week.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't lay it over one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced. 031474 through 601488.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions, as read?
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived.
031474, point Luke Kisla to the History Museum of Mobile Board. 311475, authorize the mayor to apply, accept, and receive grant funding from the Alabama Department of Transportation for drainage maintenance. 371476, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license to Kid Lobby on Airport Boulevard. 401477 through 1481 are fixing the cost of demolition of structures at 966 Kentucky Street, 709 South Carolina Street, 5641 Will Cacher Lane, 1009 South Washington Avenue, 5937 West Haven Drive South. 461482, honorarily rename Collins Avenue to honorary Herman and Cena Bryson Way. 581483 and 1484, authorizing removal of weeds, Group 1671, and assessing cost of removal of weeds, repeat weedling, Group 92. 601485 through 1488, determining appropriation to future leaders working, opportunities for entertainment, Cameron Place Property Owners Association, and Mobile Regional Community Center Foundation serve a public purpose in approving payment.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass this.
Resolutions being introduced. 081489 through 601505.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolutions 08-1489, 1491, 92, 93, 95, 96, 97, 98, and 99, with the rest of the resolutions being laid over for one week.
Second.
Properly moved in second, ending discussion.
Are we taking, so we are taking 1489?
Yes.
You can, you can just read it separately. Are we?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived, Madam Clerk?
Do I need to take it separate?
No.
Okay. 081489, approve purchase order to Coastal Alabama Community College for 2025 fall semester courses for firefighters. 081491, approve purchase order to Cause LLC for bulletproof vest. 081492, approve- ninety-two, approved purchase order, fourteen ninety-two and fourteen ninety-three, approving purchase order to Gray Bar Electric Company for light poles and arms for traffic engineering, zero-eight fourteen ninety-five, approved purchase order to Gulf States Distributors for ammunition, zero-eight fourteen ninety-six, approved purchase order to Leeds Online for annual renewal of Leeds Online Power Plus resale transaction software, zero-eight fourteen ninety-seven, approved purchase orders to North American Fire Equipment, zero-eight fourteen ninety-eight, approved purchase order to University of South Alabama for paramedic second semester courses, zero-eight fourteen ninety-nine, approved purchase order to University of South Alabama for paramedic third semester courses for firefighters.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one fifteen oh-six, call for public hearing to consider the modification of a previously approved planning approval for property located at three forty-eight and three sixty North McGregor Avenue, scheduled December the thirtieth. Forty-one fifteen oh-seven, call for public hearing to consider the modification of a previously approved plan unit development for property located at five sixty Providence Park Drive East, scheduled December thirtieth. Forty-one fifteen oh-eight, call for public hearing to consider the application of Ray Jones for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a taxi cab service scheduled December the thirtieth.
So moved. Second.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings are called.
Announcements.
Addition one, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This week, we'll be celebrating Thanksgiving. So happy Thanksgiving to District One, happy Thanksgiving to the city of Mobile. And I'm very thankful for my family, for my community, and I'm thankful for District One. So many blessings to everyone.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. Addition two, Councilwoman Ingram.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Penn for the acknowledgements today. You saw really an array of leadership, you know, starting with the board, followed by the school leaders along with the coaches. You can actually see the importance of that and how we can begin to build that leadership. So congratulations for you on that. I would like to also extend a sincere thank you and gratitude to all of our residents and community partners as we approach this season of giving and thanks. But a special thanks to District Two residents for allowing me the honor to represent you and more importantly, the, you know, giving me your trust. And so I'm thankful for that. I'm also thankful for my family and the opportunity to serve here for District Two. So thank you. I also have some announcements about upcoming events. We're hosting our first District Two All Communities Meeting on Thursday, December the fourth at six-thirty PM at Veal Health Center, and dinner will be served. Our second event is happening today. It starts at twelve o'clock, and it's the annual Thanksgiving Community Food Drive with a campground in bottom. We partner to feed the community, and that starts today from twelve to two on Adams Street. And it's also posted on the newsletter and also on Facebook. So again, greetings and happy Thanksgiving to all of our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ingram. District Four, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully everyone stays safe out there. I'm certainly thankful for this year's harvest, you know. My family has been tremendous, my friends, I'm glad to still have some. Thankful for all my colleagues up here and these wonderful city employees that we work with day to day, and certainly thankful to all the residents of District Four. So happy Thanksgiving, everybody be safe, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District Five, Councilman Fleming.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I'd like to first congratulate all the young men and women that were here with us today from Tommerville Park and LaFlore High School. It was a pleasure to have them here with us, extremely well accomplished. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This time of year reminds me to be especially thankful for my family, their health, our overall, many blessings. I'm extremely thankful for our great city, and I wish many blessings to all of our citizens and my fellow colleagues. Some district matters I would like to announce in the southern part of District Five, on December ninth, starting at four PM, there will be a smoke alarm blitz in the Granite Hill subdivision. I will host a community meeting, December tenth, at ER Dixon Elementary School at six PM. We'll cover some issues going on in District Five. We'll have three-one-one there. I was told we'll have some traffic engineering there. And if any of the citizens that plan to come, if you could please bring a new unopened toy that will be donated to Fostering Together. And this toy will be donated to some local foster children that would really benefit from it this time of year. And then I'd also like to give one other quick shout-out to Dampore Perfumes for their grand opening at thirty-seven hundred Airport Boulevard this past weekend. Had the privilege to go to their ribbon cutting, and it's a really well-done facility, and I wish them all the best. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Fleming. District Six, Councilman Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, just want to wish that be Thanksgiving, carrying on the vibe today. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone in the city and also in District Six. Personally, very thankful for my family and my three knucklehead boys and the health that we've seen over the past year. Also very grateful for everybody, all my colleagues here, everyone on the staff, the council staff, and the city of Mobile employees. Thank you for all you do, day in and day out. I know it's, sometimes it turns into a routine, but, you know, without the, without the employees of the city, the city would not function. So thank you for all you do. And then also too, thank you for the city of Mobile, the citizens of District Six and the citizens of Mobile for allowing me the opportunity each week to carry the boys of District Six down here to Government Street. Thank you for all you do. Thank you for your faith and your confidence in me, and I look forward to serving you, not only for the rest of the term, but also for next year. As far as district news, just a reminder, the Connie Hudson Regional Senior Center Foundation will be having a senior dance or a dance on December the twelfth from five to eight PM. I just want to remind everybody, we have plenty of time, obviously, before then, but did want to take a chance, just remind everyone about that. That's it with me. Thank you.
So Councilman Woods, are you gonna be dancing?
I'll be observing a dance. I don't really dance. Was told never to dance.
Thank you, Councilman Woods. District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. This coming Monday, which is a week from yesterday, we will be getting ready for Christmas at the annual Christmas celebration for District Seven. We'll be at the Mobile Museum of Art, six o'clock PM. We will serve a light supper and as always, bring gifts for the residents of Wilmer Hall. The list of items that are requested will be on the postcard that you should have already received if you live in the district. We've also got a post on Facebook, and we will be posting it again, sending out a newsletter on Friday as a reminder as well. So again, this is a District Seven Annual Christmas Celebration at the Mobile Museum of Art, six o'clock PM. And I too want to say thank you for all of the work that our staff does as we enter into this Thanksgiving holiday season. We do pause to take stock of what we're thankful for, and without this staff, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs. I really appreciate all that you all do for us every day to help us do our jobs. Thankful for my family, for my city, for the district, especially you all who voted for me, and even those who don't or who didn't. Thank you for letting me serve you. It is an honor to be here. I see you smiling up there, guys. A few people didn't vote for me. But thank you all for putting your trust into me again for this next term. Thankful for my health and for just this whole community, and look forward to going into the Christmas holidays and then of course, the next years as we continue to serve this city. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Gregory. And greetings to the citizens of District Three. And remember, on December the ninth, on Tuesday, at six o'clock PM, we will have our Christmas holiday celebration. We're asking all the residents of District Three to please come out. We'll be playing food, fun, and entertainment. Again, that will be at Pillins Miller School at six o'clock PM on December the ninth. And on Saturday, December the thirteenth, is our annual parade of threes hosted by Representative Alion Clark, Barbara Drummond, and myself. The parade will begin at B.C. Ryan High School at two o'clock PM, and we end at Pillins Miller School, inviting all the residents, especially in District Three and the city of Mobile, to please come out and enjoy this great festivity. Again, that will be on Saturday, December the thirteenth, at two o'clock PM. And to all my colleagues on this council, I am so grateful to be working with each and every one of you all. It's a pleasure to work with you all, and I am very thankful for that. To the city clerk and her staff, thank you all so much for what you all have done for us throughout the years, and grateful for you all. Just aware of the administration, we are grateful for you all. I am grateful for you all also. And to the city employees, I am grateful for each and every one of you all for coming out and serving our citizens. And I am grateful and thankful especially for the residents of District Three. Thank you all so much for putting your trust in me, and I promise you I will do all my best I can do to serve each and every one, especially the residents of District Three and the city of Mobile. And I'm just grateful just really just being in good health and in my right mind. Praise the Lord. Amen. Anything from the administration?
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving second and in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?